Okay, welcome to the Select Board meeting, March 10th, 2025, 6:00 PM. I'm going to call the meeting to order, and would everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's funny, I was thinking, now why are you saying that? Lisa usually says that.
I demoted her.
That's why she sits at the head of the table.
That's right. All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Review and approve the minutes from February 24th, 2025, Select Board meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Board reorganization. All right, first up is nomination for Chair and Vice Chair of the Select Board. Is there any nominations for Chair for the Select Board?
Yes, I'll nominate Lisa Meiser.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, Lisa, the meeting is yours.
All right, motion will be in order for Vice Chair.
I'll nominate Bruce Boucher.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations. Well, it worked good last year, but if it's not broke, they'll fix it.
So, a motion will be in order to approve the meeting schedule for the second and fourth Monday of each month at 6 o'clock, with Tuesdays being the alternate if a holiday lands on the Monday, at the Town Office.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion will be in order for posting minutes, should it be posting minutes remain?
Meetings.
Meetings agendas?
We want to have locations for posting meetings, remain at Town Office.
Oh, remain, okay.
Set.
That doesn't read right. Remain, postings at the Town Office, Proctor Post Office, and Proctor Free Library.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And a motion will be in order to designate the newspaper of record. Last year it was The Reporter.
Brandon Reporter.
Yeah.
I, yeah, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And a motion will be in order to approve the adoption of the Select Board rules and policy.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and the appointments. A motion would be in order to appoint the Select Board to serve as the Water and Sewer Commissioners for a term of one year.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. A motion will be in order to appoint Lisa Wright to serve as the Assessor for a term of one year.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion will be in order to appoint Anthony Preston to serve as the Zoning Administrator for a term of one year.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A motion will be in order to appoint Kevin Blonge to serve as the Emergency Management Chair, and Bruce Boucher as the Emergency Management Member for a term of one year.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. A motion will be in order, oh, a motion, we need a nomination to appoint a representative to serve on the Rutland County Solid Waste District. Does there anyone here that wants to do that? Or would you like to post to see if you'd find someone else to do that?
I won't do it.
You won't?
No, no, no.
Would you like to post, would you like Judy to post up?
Yeah.
Just so you know, it has been posted for about a year already. Now it's come forward, so.
All right, a motion will be in order to appoint Kyle Thornton as the alternate for a term of one year.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A motion will be in order to appoint Dick Horner to serve as the Rutland Regional Planning Commission Representative, and to appoint Judy Freger as the alternate for a term of one year.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We need someone to serve for Marble Valley Transit. Is there someone here that wants to do that, or is that what?
I am currently doing it, yes.
Okay.
The appointment was done July of last year, you know, and they do, their bylaw, say, it has to be done annually, you know. I will continue to do it, but, you know, I'd like it posted, that, you know, if somebody would like it, you know, I'll certainly step aside.
Okay.
You know, but.
So, a motion will be in order to appoint Albert as a representative to serve on the Marble Valley Transit Committee.
So moved.
For a term of one year, and to post.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Motion to appoint Bruce Boucher to serve as Regional Transportation Council Representative, and Kyle Thornton as the alternate for a term of one year.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to appoint Josh Webb to serve as the 911 Coordinator for a term of one year.
He, I reached out to him, and he's not certain. He was supposed to get back to me if he had someone else, because I told him we were appointing people tonight.
So should we just hold that to the next meeting?
Yeah, because, just in case.
So we'll hold till the 24th?
Yeah.
A motion will be in order to appoint Bruce Boucher, Tom Hogan, and Albert Winta as three representatives, two voting, and one alternate to the OCW Board of Trustees for a term of one year.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. A motion will be in order to appoint Albert Winta as Fire Warden for a term of five years. Boy, that's really a lifetime appointment.
That's a state, fewer times it has to be done, because they have to generate all the paperwork.
They just put permanent, I think.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. And then, we don't have a Tree Warden, unless someone, he wants to be the Tree Warden, or we can post that as well.
I can post it and also ask Nick, because he was last year.
Okay. All right, open public comment, there's no.
Can we, can we do the ethics one on there, the motion to appoint?
Oh, where is that?
Ethics, it's not on the thing, it's, yeah. So, we need to appoint an Ethics Liaison for the, for a point of contact and to receive complaints based on the state's new ethics policy.
And does that appointment have to be a full-time employee of the town?
Most people appoint their Town Manager, because it's someone who's.
Or a Select Board member.
Well, it's someone who's.
I think you have to go to, I'm sorry, Lisa.
I mean, I think, like, I think Brandon appointed, Seth, I think most people have done Town Manager, because it's someone that's readily accessible, I think. And then, it's their responsibility then to take the report and send it on to the state, right?
Yeah, it has to be, it just, it does have to be a municipal employee, though.
Yeah.
Or a Select Board member.
Okay, I will appoint the Town Manager.
Okay, well, the way you're looking at me, that's not what I thought you were going to say.
We're Select Board members.
That's my whole connotation.
Give him a few minutes.
How I shared. What do we call it, an Ethics Coordinator, or Liaison?
Yeah. Most complaints will probably be about me, anyway, so.
It's always best to take your own complaints. Okay, motion by Albert, second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay. And I think we have to put that on the front page of the website, too. That has to be.
For the context?
Yeah, that, that you are the whatever liaison.
We also have to come up with policies for how we handle complaints. They go to the state.
Don't they have?
They have guidelines.
Slots, model policies?
Which, yeah, which we can add on, like, we can add on to theirs, but you also all have to go through training. It's online, I believe, and everybody has to do it.
It's, you can just do, it's through a webinar, isn't it? It's just.
Yeah.
Okay, could we, well, first, can you, I guess, send everyone the link? And then, if it's on VLCT, you have to make sure you've signed in and you have an account and everything. So, okay, so if you send a link to the members, and then, at the first meeting in April, could we look at policy?
Yeah.
So by then, maybe people, most people will have gone through the training. I don't think it's that long, the training.
No, it's not, and I believe, from what I.
There's a quiz.
There's a quiz at the end. But, from what I understand, if you answer wrong, they tell you you did, so go back and answer it again, and it's a yes and no question. If you fail twice, then, maybe you should be at the board.
Group, too.
Probably.
It can.
I guess if you, yeah, if you fail twice, just complain to the.
And I'll determine what the, you know, what your, yeah, your discipline is.
Okay, so let's do that. You send everybody the link.
Okay.
And then, the first meeting in April, we'll look at model policies. And that way, we're moving along, right?
And everybody, I mean, everybody, like, the clerk has to do it, the assistant clerk, Kyle's supposed to do it, fire chiefs.
Okay, there's no public president, no one's online, orders are going around.
I think, Albert, did you want to?
Oh.
Good stuff under open comment.
Oh, okay.
So I let him.
Yeah. The Green Mountain District 5 Music Festival for 2025 was held on Friday of last week. And this group was the Middle School Orchestra, Middle School Symphonic Band, High School Jazz Band, and High School Chorus.
Yeah.
And 66 schools were represented. They were from Ferrisburg to Brattleboro, and, or not Brattleboro, but Bennington, you know, so. Their tryouts were, again, Gurnefell of last year, and eight Proctor musicians qualified.
That's awesome.
For this, you know, and, and the show, I'll tell you, it was amazing. You know, to see, you know, all these teenagers, students, they're all head to toe in black.
Oh.
I mean, it just, it just looks so nice. And then, you know, their performances are spectacular, and they even did some numbers that, you know, got you right in the heart.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, good.
Deep moving, I mean, and when you leave there, you're just awestruck. I mean, thinking, these are teenagers, and to listen what they're able to do, and.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, it was, it was a great show.
The music program certainly is strong here.
That's nice, though.
Yeah, it is.
Good for them.
Anything else? All right, moving on to, the orders are going around. Trees marked on Florence property for spring cutting, and update to Chittenden Forest.
Yeah, so I kind of, I've put that in my manager's report, too, but, so I met with the forester regarding the Florence property, and he would like to mark an additional 80 to 100 acres up there that could be cleared this coming year, and said that the contractor's going to be there in the spring, so it'd be an easy accomplishment, because everything's set up, everything's there. They could go in and, you know, start the cutting and stuff like that, once he's marked. After the fact, he also has access to that piece of property from a Pittsburgh, because it abuts Pittsburgh's property.
So are we on the Florence Road right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, but, they have already contacted me and the forester about allowing access from their property onto the, to the site. So, but then, while he was here, he got a phone call, and when he left, he called me back and said it was the contractor doing the work, and that the, there's an embargo now on US trees going to China, which is a kind of influx of the tariffs. So prices are going to go up, maybe, or not be taken, so he can't kind of gauge what that price looks like for the additional 80 to 100 acres.
Okay.
Caller has a question, or comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, will that additional 100 acres be another contract with?
With the same, yeah, because it.
And then, will it go up the bid?
No.
No, it's just continuing.
No, it's just a continuous part of that process.
How do we know what we're going to get for that?
Well, it'll be along the same lines, but now this kind of threw a wrench in it.
Mark all the trees.
He would have given us the same.
Now, the $200, $2,000 bid that we got, that was for the trees on the 109 acres?
Right.
And now he's going to do an additional 100 acres?
Right.
And what do we get for that?
Well, we don't know yet, that's why, he would, he would have probably given us the same pricing based on the trees that are up there, but he said he can't at this time, because he's not sure what's happening with costs and things like that.
Because of the tariffs.
Different, yeah.
Yeah. So, he'll keep us updated on what's going on up there and stuff. He said you can, he would like to clear it, since, you know, everything's already set, scheduled to do, you know, to just go into that lot, and to, you know, especially because there's a lot of dead up there and stuff like that, so the longer you wait, the more useless it is, so.
Yeah, it'll.
Concerns?
Well, yes, I'm a little, you know, because the first 109 acres of bids were 100,000 to 202,000, and I can understand why, you know, that, if it's going to be there, it'd be nice if they could just move into the other 100 lots, you know, and.
Well, originally, it was, you know, the whole thing was considered and thought about. It's just, we thought we'd only mark that first section first. So I think.
Which is good.
Right, and in their head, I think they thought, they realized it was a possibility, but until the end of the year, we didn't decide whether or not we'd mark it. And now he said, I'd like to mark it, because it just makes sense to get, harvest some more timber.
No, he'll be marking at the, because, because the contract we have with him right now was for marking the 102 acres, and then he had, you know, costs associated with it.
Right.
Those same costs that are reflected in that would be used.
Yeah, but he'll do it the same way, deduct it from the harvest.
So will he provide a new contract, too? I think it's part of the question.
He'll do, yeah, he would probably revise the contract, so, but we're kind of in the standstill until they find out what's going on.
The only other thing I was wondering is, you know, who's going to associate, or who's going to come up with the price for that timber?
Well, it would be between him and the contractor, the guy doing the work.
They'll fit out of middle work.
Because the one doing it, is the one cutting it, is also the one logging it off of there and then selling it outward.
On the first 109 acres, it went out to bid, and the bids were 100,000 plus the 202,000.
So the concern is, there's no bid on this 100 acres.
Right. But I, like I said, it's like a spillover of the acres they've already done, so I think he's going to be consistent with the pricing.
Okay.
Because what he, it breaks it down, it's not like I'll just, oh, let me look at those trees, I'll give you 200,000. It's like he marks it by the type of trees, how many he does cut, how many he clears out, how many he just leaves, you know, so, yeah. But we'll have more of those details once they decide.
Yes, once we get his contract, he puts the logs that are there.
Because if it's not feasible, we're going to lose money off it, then, you know, or, or if he doesn't have a buyer for the logs, because of this, so.
Okay.
And then, the Chittenden one, we discussed the Chittenden Forest, and although the previous forester, and I know, like, you were on the board, most of you, well, probably Bruce was, that they seem to think the access was only viable if we built a new road. And this forester, he, although he, you know, commend him, because he's very experienced, the old forester, he said he would like to definitely look at an alternative. He said he's dealt with a lot of property owners and a lot of forest, when he's cut forests, and gotten temporary easements on properties, and you pay them well for these properties, these people, but he said, in the long run, it's a lot, lot cheaper than building a road.
Well, it depends on how much we're going to cut.
Yeah.
Because we've. There's 500 acres, a parcel of 500 acres.
Yeah. So, I, I think that would, once they have that figured out, that might be a good thing to have them come in and talk to us about the price differential. Because depending on who, depending on how much you have to pay the abutment owner, and I'm just basing that on past practice of what we've had to deal with, so, you know.
Well, it's not like somebody's going to get paid $100,000.
Yeah, I would be surprised.
But I mean, these places, they, we had access on these properties before, and then when new people bought it, then the access was gone. He's also going up, he'll go up in, like, April, May, with his GPS to go walk the land, because he said, by doing a GIS mapping, he said he actually sees a road that looks like someone had cut a road all the way through. So he wants to walk it to see if it's actually a road that they can just go onto and stuff, and see if there's access through that way, so.
Okay, I think it would be interesting for him to come and show us, because if I recall, the last thing they talked about what you're going to log was, like, on the side of the mountain, so.
Well, there, it's, there's a lot of cliff on the entrance part.
Yeah.
And then, there's also, like, he said, the problem in going in that way, first of all, if you have a skidder, and, you know, you're trying to drag it out, the turn is so sharp, you can't bring the machines in there and maneuver it. Plus, he said, if you build a road through there, you're crossing waterways, and the more you cross waterways, the more it's going to be expensive.
Water permits, everything you cross.
And you're crossing, like, the same stream here, and then winding here, and then winding here.
Every time you cross it, there were.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying, so.
But I thought they had the piece of machinery where they went and took the tree, picked up the tree, put the tree in a pile, and like that. I mean, don't they have, like, I thought that's what they were doing up here on Florence Road with the machinery? That it's a little more high-tech machinery than just going in and dropping trees.
Right, but I think it's just, it's, it's not dropping them as much as getting in there to get to the trees to drop.
Cross those waterways.
Yeah, okay. So maybe, like, once he has gone up there and looked and done all that, maybe he just comes back and, you know, shares.
Because I'd like to get that done sooner rather than later, because we're already on the tail end of the extension even, so.
Yeah, right.
So maybe if they came, like, the first meeting in May?
Yeah, because he should probably, unless he doesn't, it depends, April's kind of busy for him, so it depends on the wetness and stuff, but, yeah. Hopefully, like, the second, the second meeting in May, if not the first.
Yeah. Okay. All right, a motion will be in order to leave the regular board meeting and open the, into the Board of Water Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I put this in my manager's report, too, but I'll just mention it here instead. The water was shut off at 15 Kane Street due to a pipe burst in the basement. So that is one of the highly delinquent accounts.
Is that a vacant house?
I don't know if anyone's living there now. That was one that had renters in and out.
Oh, okay.
But, so they had, they've shut it off. Actually, I think the water came out, so it went into the next door neighbor's basement, even, so.
Okay. So what, it's not our issue?
No, it's not our issue, I'm just saying, in terms of, I think we need to look at it, because the delinquency is, you know, thousands and thousands.
Yeah.
That it might be an opportunity to make, move on it, if there's nobody living in it.
Well, if, but the water shut off now?
Yeah.
Okay, so what will be the next step, then?
It would depend probably on whether or not somebody wants to tag sale.
Oh, okay. Do we have things like, let's say, when we shut water like that off, that house is vacant. Do, like, some places have, I don't know, for lack of a better term, like what people put on a car that has a million parking tickets, do, can we do some?
Like a boot?
Yeah, can we do something like that on the curb stop? Or what's, I guess, what's, do someone turn it back on? I mean, I realize there, there's an issue, but just in general.
Right, well, you have a special tool to open those.
Yeah, that could be 10 foot, 10 foot long.
So that, that's prohibitive enough, okay.
Yeah, I mean, people have been known to have a tool somehow, and turn it back on. But with this, the pipe being broken, it would just cause more.
Right.
Damage, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm sure, I understand that here with this one, but.
Sure it's not going to be repaired.
Okay. So, so tag sale the house for property and water rents? I mean, it's delinquent, I'm guessing on both?
I'm not positive.
Or not tag sale, but, no.
Yeah, but definitely the water and sewer, I think it was.
Okay.
16, 20,000?
Oh, that's that one, yeah, okay. Yeah, that would be great, I think, to move on that, and if it's delinquent in property, to move in tangent, I would think would make sense.
And it's the same one for West Street, too, the same property owner, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, anything else for water?
I, I'll do this the next meeting, just because we weren't putting it on this agenda, but we have had a few people come in and do agreements and payments on the delinquent accounts, so.
Okay.
And then I'm going to have, now that the snow has melted, have the guys go to the properties and start looking for shut offs for the ones that don't know if they have them yet.
All right, so the next meeting will have an updated.
Yeah, list.
List. All right, a motion will be in order to leave the Board of Water Commissioners and enter the Board of Sewer Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So as you all know, the bond passed for the wastewater treatment facility, so that's a good thing.
Yeah.
So I believe this week, if not next, but definitely, I would think by this week, they were going to go up for bids for the sludge removal, to try to get bids on that, so. That will be good. We did, we're applying for the USDA grant, which is a nightmare in itself, so it's extremely cumbersome and lengthy, and I'm not sure if we'll even qualify. The congressional grant came out, too, that you could apply for, which is the one I was denied last year.
Yeah.
So I don't, and, but the thing with that is, like, the process, you could actually apply this year and not get the money for, like, three years.
Right.
So. And they don't, most of them don't reimburse, so if we, this project's going to be done in two years, what we've put into it, they're not going to reimburse us for it.
Right, but did we have a USDA grant before then that had, or was that the clean water that has the negative?
Most of them are the clean water revolving fund.
And that has, like.
We applied for that one already for this.
Yeah, so that was the one that we had, like, before, when we did, like, the water projects and stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So what, is the USDA issue, like, we don't charge enough? That was the issue once before, when they looked at our medium income, because they're the ones that did that survey.
They're just very, very restrictive of what they do, and everything's a timeline and everything, you know, and it's federal funding, so who knows?
And the sludge, like, one of the things they said, they were thinking Canada. I mean, it would seem like, kind of, the way we're going here.
Right.
Is that still?
They haven't mentioned anything negative about that.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
But they did say, was it a town meeting or the meeting before, when they were here, there was three potential sites now.
Well, they said, they said New York.
Just Canada.
Well, they said New York, Vermont, but Vermont was limited. I thought that there was only one or two places.
Vermont is more like a landfill than it is a.
Was the only one.
That is up north, too, though.
When we have our representatives here, we can, you know, ask them about, you know, Vermont should have a site to dispose of the stuff.
Well, Casellas does have one.
Yeah, Casellas.
But, I mean.
In Coventry.
Yeah, I think it's different than New York and Canada, though. Canada's really like a major sludge, you know, whereas Vermont's a landfill. But there's also, I think, a bill up in the legislature that is addressing this whole issue, and how do we remove sludge and get rid of it? So that's why we need to push our representatives up there to listen and do something.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else for?
Uh, nope.
Okay. So a motion will be in order to leave the Board of Sewer and re-enter the Select Board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, you have a copy of the Sheriff's Report. Any questions about that? That's while we're under Sheriff, just a public announcement, dog licenses are due April 1st, so. Downstairs with a copy of your current rebates, for your dog, not for you. All right, and then, did you have any? All right. And then did you have anything else for managers or that was?
The only other thing I met, wanted to mention, um, and I'm putting it on the next agenda, is we've had complaints about, um, the traffic and the speed going out of Proctor and coming into Proctor on South Street. Um, so I, you know, I've addressed it with the sheriff, I've addressed it with the cops, I don't, the state police. You know, the sign deters some people, the people who are gonna speed, speed, so, um, you know, this person is, is quite upset about it and wants something done, so I've invited the sheriff here for the next meeting as well to talk about it, so.
Okay.
Did you invite that person too?
Huh?
Did you invite that person?
Yes, yep.
And when you say complaint, traffic and speed, there, the traffic means what, the amount of traffic?
No, just the speed of the traffic going in and out of town.
I was gonna say, I don't think we can put up these. Well, I just wasn't sure.
We're only allowed twenty cars through the town.
Did they say what time of day? You know, cause lots of times when I'm walking on, you know, Route Three or on South Street, you know, there is a lot of speeding that's going on during the day and I don't know if maybe that's when he's seeing it during the day.
I would say it's probably mostly like weekends during the day, maybe, um.
Yeah, you know, where the police activity is probably.
Six to.
The lightest.
Yeah.
Nine and.
And it is, it's extremely fast lately at night when there are no sheriffs present.
I don't know, state police, uh, yesterday, state police were setting in Marcel's parking lot at before eleven o'clock, so.
Oh, yeah.
There, I mean.
I'm talking like two in the morning, three in the morning.
No, 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 but he's saying during the day.
I, I, that's what I said during the day.
On the weekends, there's usually a state officer, um, stationed down there.
He was there today at four.
Yeah, so you see a state officer there, certainly more.
He's on that route a lot.
Yeah, well, and they all come through here, so, you know. It's amazing people do speed since you do have so many state police, cause this is how they go back and forth.
Yeah.
The academy.
Uh, someone had mentioned, you know, putting a sign on the way out of town, you know, like right at La Fons, you know, that it's twenty-five and I'm like, you're only going hundred yards before you hit fifty, you know, so I mean, and I think a lot of people, once they hit La Fons, do kinda, you know, go from twenty-five up to thirty-five, you know, and so, so I just wanted to address it and I said to the individual that they can come to the board and raise their concerns.
Yeah. But it's always nice when people have concerns also come with some kind of plan of action, you know?
Solution.
Because, you know, issues that fall within the parameters of policing and like that, I mean, while you're happy to listen and to do it, we only have as much control as we have in contracting, I guess, with the sheriff really. I mean, that, that policing lies, lies with them and we're, you know, have X amount of hours and, you know, and if people are looking at the reports, um, you know, we've seen it, they've caught lots of people, so it's not like, you know.
And, and you mentioned the reports, I was wondering what this was, it said, uh, uh.
Is it on this one that we're looking at?
Yes, yes, it's, uh, uh, South Street Patrol, Stat Patrol, Stationary Patrol, DPAT for speed, highest speed thirty-four miles per hour, so. So they evidently have the.
Yeah.
Yep.
They're reading it, yeah. So, I mean, so that's not quite ten miles over, but.
Yeah, cause the sign doesn't, you know, I explained, doesn't take data, you know, it just, it just, it's just to have cost, make people alert that all of a sudden, whoa, you gotta slow down to twenty-five, but a lot of people just.
The one with data is gonna be twenty-five hundred or?
Oh, there, this, the, there's six thousand.
Yeah, this one was.
These are like, yeah, five thousand dollars, so, and, and plus, like the sheriff said, you know, it's, he said lots of times too, traffic isn't going as fast as it appears or sounds. Um, but also when we had the one on North Street, that was, um, that took data. But all it shows is that at like midnight, a car was going sixty miles an hour down the hill. So unless you're there to catch them, you know, it's, it's important to know how many people are actually going down that hill, so maybe you can have post sheriff there more often.
Yeah, the only thing, I mean, you could really do with that is if you were saying like, well, every day between ten and noon.
Right.
Yes.
You know, there's, that seems to be the highest amount of traffic. I mean, I would say the highest amount of traffic is probably when people are leaving it, but either coming or going, seven thirty to eight and then again from, you know, five to six.
Right.
So, but I mean, and then what, you're gonna concentrate and just have the officer be there, so, um.
And I know we've had the same problem on East Street, on South Street, you know, on West Street, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
It's hard to.
But that's the nice thing about those mobile units that record, you know, it's like that person on South Street that's raising a concern about speed, well, you could set it up and take, collect the data and then analyze what's there, like you say. It may be, you know, nine PM to twelve PM, is when you need the radar setup.
Right.
Yeah.
It's just a good tool.
Yeah, but you have to work it in with when the sheriff has got that unit free.
Yeah.
I don't know how many units say that.
Maybe they should buy additional ones.
Huh?
Maybe they should buy additional ones.
And when they do that, our.
Oh, yeah, they're gonna pass it on the office.
I'm sure our payment might be a little different too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, maybe the people that are coming will have ideas. One thing about when there were chickens running across the road, it seemed to slow the traffic down a great deal, and that's an idea, so. Maybe that's something to look at. Okay, um, any other old or new business? Albert?
Just one, because I think we tabled it, twenty-six fifty-one West Street because the onset of winter. You know, and it's probably gonna rear its head again in the spring, you know, just.
Josh reach out to you?
Yes, he did.
About the trees?
And then I went down there and looked, but you know, they limbed and took that stuff, it looked like they were clearing it away from.
Those trees?
Well, the limbs.
They're there.
But.
See those trees though? They're huge.
Yeah, yeah, you know, so.
But what's, I mean, the only, I, I, I don't know what the options are. I mean, it's, it, there is a delinquency, but it's not like one of the higher ones.
Yeah, they're not even, they, they were paying taxes, they don't have water, they don't have sewer.
I think it's like less than nine hundred dollars.
Right.
I mean, other than if you're gonna start giving them like, I don't know, I guess you could give them the junk ordinance thing because they're beyond this deadline and like that, and that's a, a daily.
Civil penalty there, yes.
Every day.
And, right.
It's unfortunate though, because we, you, you can keep on finding them and keep on putting leads on and then it's not gonna get paid.
No.
Well, and it seems like they always just like when they go, I mean, it's, we've seen it like with dogs and things like that, that when they go to where is it, White River Junction for that?
Yeah.
Then they just say, hmm, okay, and.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, so all the work falls on us to, to document everything and then there's never any penalty at the end.
And the state kinda washed their hands of it right off.
Yeah.
Right off.
So, I don't know, I mean.
I mean, I was thinking of reaching out to them again and to just say, okay, we did this, you know, we had the asbestos removed, they've added more garbage to the property. Now they've cut huge tree, I mean, you're not talking saplings, you're talking trees.
From where, on the back of the property?
Onto the house.
Oh.
The first day I went by, I was like, oh my, you could hardly see any of the remnants of the house because the trees are so big and they're pines.
And they cut them or they fell?
No, they cut them.
Yeah. If they fell, they fell pretty soon.
Concerns, that's why I reached out to the fire, cause there was concerns they might try to to burn them, and you know what it's like when you burn pine, you know, it's just sparking and smoking and.
Well, they wouldn't get a burn permit, you know.
Huh?
They wouldn't get a burn permit for burning what they've got there, you know, if they limbed it.
They also wouldn't ask for a burn permit. That was our concern.
Yeah.
They would just do it.
If it's on top of the pile, you know, then I would stop and then, cause that's air pollution, you know, issue. And that, we can't enforce that, but we can fill out a report, you know, to the regional, uh, uh,
Yeah.
Air pollution officer and then, uh.
I mean, the really, the only, um, piece of authority that we have for policy is under the junk ordinance, I mean, so.
Right.
We could send notice of violation for that. So if people wanna go in and read that and think about that for the next meeting, that, that's really your only avenue of taking any kind of action. So.
Yeah, there was somebody burning by the railroad crossing. Today, when I came through, they had two, three piles of.
On Center Rutland?
Yeah.
Yeah, and again.
Down in that swamp area there?
Or they cut all, or they cut all the trees.
Yeah, if you've got two hundred feet of dirt, you don't have to have a permit.
Right.
Or if it's, you know, snow covered, you don't have to have a permit and.
My concern is like even if it's, it's not just trees, they've bought, brought every kind of debris there anyway, so even if there's spilled, even if they have a small fire, it, to me, it's still pollution. You don't know what's in there, what they're burning. It's, it's.
You're not supposed to be burning anything other than.
Yeah, no, you're right.
I mean, so, I mean, you couldn't burn that front house no matter what, whether the trees were on it or not, that's, I mean, you can't burn in your backyard, you sure the heck can't burn a house. I mean.
I just don't see it ever being.
Settled.
Yeah.
No.
No, and you're gonna have the same issue that you have last year with, uh, neighbors, I mean, as it warms up here about rodents and all of that kinda stuff, so, cause I'm sure that anything and everything's taking refuge.
Right, oh, yeah.
And that was their concern last year when they came that, that there were large.
Yeah.
Rodents.
Yeah, well, the health officer will deal with that.
And a beating.
Albert's done his part now, sure. That's your turn.
Yeah, great.
All right, I'll reach out to the state, just, just.
I, and just as a point of reference, I would just read the, the junk ordinance to see if that is the direction that people wanna go, cause that's really your the only avenue you have, so.
Yeah.
And see what that says and see what the consequences are, um. So. All right, anything else? The tri-town thing, when is that gonna be coming to light?
We have to, um, I have three property owners I have to talk to, um, by March thirty-first about, um, temporary easements.
Yeah.
Crossing through, and Pittsburgh's tasked with some property owners and West Rutland's tasked with some property owners. And then once we compile all of that, then we'll kinda figure where we're at in terms of, um, you know, anybody who's objecting to it. Um, I'm going to Rutland Town's town meeting on the twenty-fifth to ask them about, you know, um, the path, cause it's going through Rutland Town for a portion, and we just wanna make them aware of it and if they have any issues with it and stuff, um.
And where is it going through Rutland Town? Because.
From West Proctor Road?
Down, down.
Down to the Center Rutland.
Oh, cause the first meeting I came to, they, everyone was like, oh, no, 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 we're not going through Rutland Town, oh.
I mean, there's no way to avoid it.
Well, I think that was the comments that were made. Recall that, wasn't it?
So where, where is it going through Rutland Town? Well, like from the West Proctor Road, when you come from the castle down.
So actually on the road then?
Uh, yeah, well, we're going on the, we're going on the tracks, the old rail bed up until, um, Esther Capens, I believe. And then coming up to the west, cause then it's too, it's, it's too wet down further and stuff. And then from, so from there to Center Rutland.
And then, um, there's never been a conversation about like, is it just a done deal? What's the cost to communities? Who's going to maintain it?
Well, they haven't, I mean, that, we're gonna have another public meeting once, once we have the route mapped out.
Yeah.
And we know if there's gonna be temporary easements and we know what's going on, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Cause it just seems like a lot of work without having that information, in my opinion. Like knowing responsibility and payment seems like.
But you can't have a payment till you know what the route is and what it's gonna involve, and you always do the planning first and then decide, well, what.
When I say like the payment, like is Proctor gonna be responsible for whatever's in Proctor, is West, you know?
I would, I would guess, and I can't say for sure, but I would guess it would be a joint effort in terms of trying to get grant money from all three towns as a tri-town.
Yeah, but that still doesn't ask the question, who's doing the work? So like, you get grant money and Pittsburgh does Pittsburgh, West Rutland does West Rutland, Proctor does Proctor.
Well, I would think we'd hire whoever you contracted to do any kind of work. I mean, a lot of it's not work, there's routes already, there's paths already.
Yeah.
But any kind of work would be contracted by one, for one person, so the same people are doing the whole route.
Gotcha.
Just like, just like the designing, you know, the Stantec is doing the whole bike path.
Okay, well, it'll be interesting to see, cause there were a lot of questions asked and I don't feel like that, I don't know, it just seems like we had a public meeting and then.
Yeah.
Well, because it's like, well, first of all, the more you people you get involved, the worse it becomes, cause everyone has different opinions, different ideas. So I think just focusing on our group, and then we brought a few people in from the towns that, you know, bike or something like that, so we got their opinion, we went, we hashed out like three, then, then we finally came up with a fourth route. Um, and now we have like one route and then an alternative route. So once I think they get the actual drawing, they didn't wanna go to the town and say, all right, here's A, B, or C.
Yeah.
And still, where, where are you at? Cause that was the first meeting. So now it's like, okay, here's our plan. And this is what, you know, the intent is and what, you know, gets people's feedback.
So it's your responsibility then to contact the property owners in Proctor and have them sign agreements or have them just say, okay?
Show them what the routes are, and there's a map that they can do online, or I could bring hard copies and go through it with them and just kinda tell them what, yeah.
But not signing anything?
Not yet.
Just verbal, okay.
This is just verbal.
Okay. Okay, cause that kinda seems like what the last issue was, that.
Oh, I know, and I mean, two of these property owners, I, I mean, if, you're talking, you know, like fifty feet, you know, just passing by in between two properties that's not used. You know what I mean? So that's, you know, the other one's more of a major property being used, but I don't think, I personally don't think we'll run into problems.
Okay. Okay, so we're thinking like May or June, we might see what that looks like?
I would hope so, yeah.
All right, anything else? All right, um, oh, inviting the legislators, are we, have we sent anything out to them?
Um, no, I haven't yet.
Okay, so do we wanna do that for the next meeting or do we wanna do that for the April meeting?
Um, I'd rather wait till April.
Okay.
Cause there'll be a lot on the March one, the next one.
I mean, and our, our should be an easy meeting, cause they don't, aren't usually in session on Mondays anyway, so. But they can join us virtually, so.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I do think it's important. I mean, I think the three acre thing is an important thing to, um, I mean, that could impact a lot of people too, so. I, I think it's, I mean, I, I think that, I think that the legislators should be more interactive with your constituents, not just on town meeting day.
Right, right.
You know, so, I mean, we heard from them, but there wasn't a little, there wasn't any kinda back and forth. You don't know if everybody in the room thought what you said was great or everybody in the room thought what you said was, you know, awful, so.
We could get them here at least quarterly, at the very least.
Yeah, I mean, Butch used to be really good about coming. I don't recall senators ever being great about coming here. And I realize that most of them were all from Rutland City or Rutland Town at that point, but.
Well, even if they came at the beginning of the session and then at the end of the session, so they could say, this is what we're working on, and then later say, this is what we did, this is how, you know? I mean.
But I think in-between is important because if we said they're going to be here or whatever, that might encourage more people to sign on, that might encourage people to attend. I think they need to be more interactive with what your constituents are thinking. Don't just come and tell me this is what you're talking about and this is an issue. You need to hear from people that this is a concern. Or how do, how is this really going to impact us? You can't, three of you can't make the decision up there for, you know, so, that's just how I feel.
No, and actually the planning commission had reached out to me about having them come down, and I said that the select board was planning on inviting them. I said, so I'm not gonna try to get them here twice.
Yeah.
So I said.
No, it would be, they'd have to come.
I said, when the select board gets them here, I said, then we'll let you know and you can show up, so.
Yeah, because they've only got, what, one day that they're free Monday and.
Yeah. Yeah, so, okay, so let, let's try to, let's try to get them, or try to get some of them for the first April meeting. And if they don't wanna come, then we'll just say, we invited them and they didn't wanna come.
Right. All right. Try to email them this week, so they have plenty of time.
Yeah. And I would just say, all we're, what we're looking for is just, you know, really a legislative update about things that, you know, kinda things that were covered at town meeting, where they're moving, where they see things that are active, you know, the sludge thing, that's a priority.
Yeah.
The three acre rainwater, that, that's a concern, other, things like that, that are going to impact the masses of our-
Right.
-property owners.
Yeah.
That, you know, that are, that could have some kind of, you know, fiscal impact.
Yeah.
I think that's what we're, we're really looking at, so. All right.
Yeah, is it be Albert Franklin's, that, the twenty-ninth?
Right, of this month.
Of this month, yeah.
Yeah. Um, and then we didn't do committee liaisons, so is it, we're just leaving those as they were, like, people like Jay was, Planning Commission?
Yeah, unless anybody wants to be on, you know, if somebody wants to be on, you know, the Planning Commission as a liaison, or Parks and Rec as a liaison, otherwise we can keep them as we are.
Okay, I think that's why-
There used to be one for the Fire Department too, and then that kinda-
Oh, yeah.
Went away.
And do we, like, any of those committees, do we have any openings on any of those?
There's one at Parks and Rec, there's gonna be, 'cause one person is-
Okay, and our Beaver Pond or anything like that?
Beaver Pond is pretty much the same, and I did explain that, you know, it's, they should, there's a lot of people back and forth on it, but I said that we should keep it as a five-member committee-
Yeah, that's, yeah.
And other people can always volunteer, come in, you know, help all that stuff, so.
Yeah, 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 but they need to have the same five people to have a meeting, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And I'll reach out to them to make sure, to see if it's the same players that are there.
Yeah, okay. All right, sounds good. All right, anything else, future agenda items? All right, motion would be in order to adjourn at six fifty-two.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.